Welcome to the May seventeenth, two thousand seventeen Board of Selecting Sewer Commissioners meeting. All members are present. First item on the agenda are public comments. Hearing none. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes, April twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, regular session.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Next item on the agenda is May third, two thousand seventeen, regular session.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Next item on the agenda is May third, two thousand seventeen, executive session. So move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, next item is review and vote to approve warrants for the period covering May fourth, two thousand seventeen through May sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, payable warrants for the town fiscal FY two seven, two thousand seventeen, number forty-five and number forty-six, sewer enterprise warrant FY two thousand seventeen, SE twenty-four and SE twenty-five, and municipal light plant warrant, number twenty-three, and school warrant, number seventeen. So move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is the next person here yet?
I don't see Karen here yet, so...
Larry, you're all set. You're here and ready to go. Okay, Larry, the next item we can do is Larry Salee's presentation of prioritization plan, Complete Streets program.
I'm actually going to do it for him.
Okay. Now, is that all right then? We can take that. This says seven thirty.
No.
Okay.
Nothing is a hearing here, so we can take things out of order.
Okay.
This is the Complete Streets. You have, in your packet, you should have exactly what I have here. Transportation Committee met with the CMR PC several times to develop this Complete Streets program. There is funding. It's four hundred thousand dollars up to available for us if we get this in on time and approve it. We did some prioritization in the first ten are priorities. I don't know if you've read through them, if you want me to run through them quick or...
What does the board like to, just go through them quickly?
Yeah, I'll run through them. I've got a kind of shorthand here. First one is Franklin Street, Route twelve intersection, right around the corner, and proposals to put a hawk crossing signal there, which would be activated, pedestrian activated. They walk up, push the button, and it would flash to let people know there's a pedestrian crossing. It doesn't, I don't believe it stops traffic, but it just flashes yellow so people know that there's somebody in the crosswalk.
Right when they push the button?
Right. It's not on all the time, it's just when activated. Number two is on Route twelve from Franklin Street to the lights at one forty, which I saw checks, short section between Franklin Street and the funeral home roughly, and that's looking for improvements with ADA ramps. The third one was on Route twelve from the lights, again, going down towards the Lower Goodale Street. That section sidewalks not in very good shape. That's in front of the present police station, present DPW, down towards the Lower Goodale.
I just want to clarify, and for us it says it, for the public, it looks like these are in order of importance, right? It says rank on the far left-hand side?
These are the ones that we would like to do first, at the town. When we go for this money, we're not required to go in any particular order, we can do what we want, but we ourselves decided that these are the ones that, first ten, we'd like to go after.
So no, these first ten are no order? We just, these are the ones, we want to go after all ten of these?
Yeah, as many as we can get with the money that we're going to get. So, next, section four is Goodale Street from Newton to Crescent Street. That would tie in the sidewalks from, there's no sidewalks there now, so that would tie in Newton and Crescent Street with sidewalks on Goodale. Middle Newton, that's that new section that we may be doing the drainage section, the drainage work, put a sidewalk there, and that would connect Goodale to Prospect. There's no sidewalk there now. And then, Lower Newton, that's where Mr. Sweetman lives, that side of the street on, across from the library. It's, the sidewalk's in terrible shape now, so that would be an improvement with ADA ramps. And Route twelve, if you go down past the causeway, down by the kettle, there's no sidewalk, basically, from Beaman Street up to Whole Street. It's kind of a no man's land out there, so we'd put one there with, to fill in that gap. And then, Central Street...
Excuse me, you just, you don't have a dollar amount there because you haven't got a...
No, that's a, that was, they have a dollar amount there, but that includes paving the road, but we don't have to do that. We don't have to pave the roads too. So we will have a dollar amount later, we don't have a dollar amounts yet, as far as just the sidewalks. Those include paving the streets, which for some reason, they told us to go ahead and submit it this way, and then we can amend it when we get the money to do just the sidewalk area. We don't have to do the streets.
Okay.
I don't have a full number yet. And, let's see, Central Street, I don't know if you've seen Central Street, between Prospect and Goodale, it cuts through, the sidewalks in that little section are real bad. I've got some calls this winter about how bad they are. And then, past the high school up toward, up to Pine Arden, there are sidewalks on Pine Arden, but there's no sidewalks from Pine Arden to the school on Crescent, so that's a section we'd fill in with a new sidewalk. And the last one was Route twelve from here, from Franklin Street up to Walmart. There's a lot of pedestrian traffic, and there's some pieces that are missing. We fill in all those pieces with ADA ramps too. And then, of course, there's, we had to have at least, I think it was fifteen sections in order to qualify for the grant, so we have, in the back of the sheet, we say we have all twenty-two sections, so later on, we can see how far the money goes, actually, and then if we get enough money to go further, we'll go further, and if not, we'll just use it for the next, the next phase.
Do you want to add anything to that?
Just to say that we did seek some public comment on this. The Complete Streets prioritization plan was part of a public hearing that was held in conjunction with the open space hearing, this was earlier this year, and we did receive some comments at that meeting, and some members of the public also submitted comments after that. So all of that's been taken into account and worked into this list of potential projects. The Transportation Committee worked alongside CMR PC and Butch to put this together, and the committee did vote at their last meeting to endorse these projects. There were some criteria that they used in developing some sense of prioritization, and the criteria basically were sidewalk areas that were within, was it a half mile? One mile around the town center and the schools. And then, there were other key items that they felt heading toward the causeway and the section up on the other side of the causeway, and then, the other thing was to try to fill in the sidewalk areas within existing sidewalks so that there'd be a continuum in the main center of town.
Mr. Hadley?
All sidewalks, is any land taking, is it all town-owned land we're going to be using for sidewalks?
I believe so. They're either sidewalks that are already there, or gaps we're filling in between, and there's a couple of streets, like on the upper, there's a Newton Street, or Middle Newton Street, I call it. We may have to look at that, because there'll be new sidewalks there.
Yeah.
So we may have to look at that.
On number three, it says other sources of money, two hundred fifty-three thousand. Does it say where would that additional...
So we'd be looking for chapter ninety funds to help with any, if we don't achieve enough money within the Complete Streets Phase Three grant, we're able to use chapter ninety funds on these projects.
Oh, so just number three just has a line that says other sources of money, two hundred thousand, that's...
We would have to augment.
Okay. But all the other ones say zero?
Right.
At least the top twelve?
And as Butch had said, we, you know, we're putting our best estimates in terms of unit pricing on these projects right now, and CMR PC did say that the projects do include pavement, but in many instances, our pavement will be in good shape, and we don't want to, we'd like to have the sidewalk money go further, so, you know, I wouldn't put too much stock in what this price for each project is stating right now, because that will be reevaluated when we put together the final list of what we want to apply for under that Tier Three grant.
The sidewalks, granite, or we're going to use, we're going to use the curb?
I guess it's kind of up to us, what we want to do.
What's the pricing?
I don't have it with me.
I mean, what's the estimated pricing? Is it for granite?
With the granite, wasn't it? Because we were going with the same pricing as we did for the last sidewalk.
I have the pricing, I just don't have it with me.
I would think we'd want to use granite, because it's going to last forever, and as we know, asphalt doesn't.
Yeah, right. Yeah, we're just thinking that. So, so we're going to go out to try to get grant money for these?
Right.
And these are our top twelve?
These are our, these are our top ten, basically, and, but the, but what will be approved for is the entire list, and when we go to actually apply for the grant funds under the Tier Three portion of the program, we can move forward whichever of these listed items we determine is most appropriate at that time.
We're just back to Pat's question, so if we only get a portion of the money, is this in, would we do number one first, number two, or will we re-decide?
We can, we can re-decide. We can do whatever we want to do with it.
So the committee hasn't voted that it's in this order?
No, but what they did vote were that these first ten were the top priority of the entire list.
We get half the money, then they'd go back to the drawing board and see what's most important, and see how much we can stretch it.
On the Goodale, near the, are you going to do this on the park side, right, going up the hill, you said?
Yeah, from the courts up to...
To Newton?
Yes.
Okay. And then, when you're, if you get money and we do Newton, what side of the street would that one be on?
Newton Street, that's actually up in the air at this point.
Okay.
Middle Newton. Lower Newton's going to have them on both sides.
Right, and that was going to be my next question. So we're going to end up with both sides on the, near the library?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So we haven't determined the middle or the upper, middle part?
The upper Newton, we have, we're not going to do anything with that at this point. That's the one that goes through the school parking lot?
Oh, I don't count that.
It's the middle.
Well, the pool road.
So we're talking about the middle section?
Middle section, yeah. We haven't decided which side, I suppose, once the construction's completed, we can decide what we're going to do with that, or maybe...
I'm just, just curious, because if you're going up on one side, like of Goodale, and then you got a crossover?
Right.
And, just for consistency, so I was just trying to visualize.
Yeah, we, we'd have to look at that.
Okay.
We put crosswalks in in areas where we'd have to...
Okay, that was going to be my question.
So it's going to end? It's going to go up Goodale to Newton, and it's just going to end there?
It's going to go, isn't it, doesn't it tie in there? Right, right, it's going to end.
It's going to end.
It's going to end.
Okay.
Absent the flash and crosswalk on, across Route twelve, you have, obviously, the crosswalks were appropriate if we do this project, was there any discussion of enhanced vehicle notification types, things, flashing signs at any other locations when you, at this point in the project?
No. Anything else on this issue? Anybody else have any questions? Anita, do you have anything else to add?
Just that the committee is looking for a vote of endorsement by the board so that we can put this forward for approval by MassDOT.
How long does that take, any of you, approvals?
I honestly couldn't tell you. I don't know if there's, you know, some cycle of timeframe. I would expect that we would probably hear by middle of summer, and that timing would probably work well for us, because at that point, we would also be completed with our updated pavement management plan, and we can put these projects out together.
And, oh, Mr.?
Yes.
When does it have to be submitted? By?
By June thirtieth.
June thirtieth, okay. Great, thank you.
I'll make a motion to endorse moving forward with the grant application.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this matter? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Can we just have you step back, and we'll come back to you?
Yep.
The seven fifteen is now here, Anita?
We have Karen...
Karen Clark, Director of Worcester Division of the Public Health. Update on marijuana law.
So, I just wanted to go back through some materials. I apologize, and I'm taking individual packets, but if you want to take one of each item, then you'll all go back.
Okay.
So, Anita asked for me to come here tonight, because I understand that you might have some questions regarding marijuana. I can certainly share with you information that I have on medical marijuana and the very little information that I have on recreational marijuana.
If one to meet paper questions?
Excuse us a minute.
No, no, that's fine. I apologize.
Karen, maybe you could start with an update on the medical marijuana?
Sure. So I guess it would be helpful for me to know if there's actually already a host agreement in this community for a medical marijuana facility? Okay. So, as far as medical marijuana goes, I can just tell you that there are a number of communities in our public health district that you all are a member of that have signed host agreements for medical marijuana dispensaries. Worcester actually has four of those coming online, and then, again, some of the other communities, I believe Grafton, Lester, I'm not sure about Millbury, but there's a number of them, at least, in the public health district. About a year and change ago, I started working with our city's law department and a number of other city departments to craft a local regulation. The state regulation is very prescriptive, for lack of a better term, it's, it's a pretty strict regulation. However, as you know, local boards of health can create stricter regulations. I feel that it's really important, because this is a new venture, that we really need to have some kind of local oversight. So essentially, working along with the law department and city manager's office and fire, police, inspectional services, and others, we created a draft regulation, which is actually in your packet. That regulation was presented to the Worcester Board of Health a couple of weeks ago, and then, Monday of this week, we had a public hearing. There was one dispensary representative that came. It's really not that intensive, it's really just sort of requiring these folks to come in front of the Board of Health in Worcester to get a license to be able to operate locally. We essentially would just take all the information that they're already providing to the state, which is pretty extensive. And we would have a team, I'm calling it Medical Marijuana Application Review Team, that would meet in advance and sort of go through all of the documentation that we would require on the application. There's been a lot of concern about just making sure that their security plans would be approved by the Worcester Police Department, and, you know, we do tobacco control, we do that already for West Boylston and a number of the other communities. We might want to try to send a miner in. I understand it's like Fort Knox to get in, but I've heard a lot of things, but I actually want to see it and make sure that what we're hearing is in fact true. I have no doubt that, you know, after this lengthy process of opening these facilities and growing facilities, that these folks want it to work. However, I want to make sure that we can go in, if we want to go in, just to see what's happening, and just to really build a relationship with these facilities, and my understanding is when recreational marijuana comes online, these facilities will be able to co-locate recreational marijuana, and they'll be the first ones to do that, because they're already in operation. So, because there's really not a lot of information at this time, you've probably heard on the news that there's still a lot happening on the state level, there's a cannabis commission that had to come together and decide what they want to do. So, we would like to be able to have relationships now and to understand how these facilities work, and to build a relationship with them, and just kind of make sure that, you know, things are going according to plan, and also, if they get a license from the Board of Health, if there are some kind of issues, or there's, you know, maybe they're selling product outside of the hours, for example, that was stated in the application, then they'd be able to come back in front of the Board of Health, and we'd be able to resolve those issues there. So at this time, the board did have a public hearing, as I mentioned, on Monday, and they did not take a vote yet. They're actually allowing for five more business days, in case anybody wants to provide written testimony, but I'm assuming they're going to be taking a vote pretty soon. The first facility in Worcester is supposed to open in October, I believe, so obviously, we would want to have something in place before that time. So, I just know that a lot of communities are looking to sort of think through what their options are, so even though this was created for the Worcester Board of Health, it's certainly something that we're sharing with all the other town managers and boards of health in the public health district, to see if it's something that they might be interested in. So that's kind of the medical marijuana piece. I don't know if anybody has questions about it, anything I said?
I know we have a, an area where, where it can be sold, is that on Hartwell Street?
Industrial area? Voted on that, I think.
Well, a couple of town meetings.
Is that our area?
Industrial area, I thought, I don't...
So it can only be, if you're going to have dispensary, it can only be in that area of town, I would assume. So, a lot of towns are doing moratoriums.
Right. So we're, so what I just described is medical, there's also in your packet, I gave you a draft that Dan Margato's office in, the town manager's office in Truasbury gave, they knew I was meeting with you folks, I asked them if they'd be willing to share this as part of the Public Health District. So this is their mock-up of what they're proposing to put on the town meeting in the fall, but this is basically, I think, what you're, you're, might be interested in, so this is specific to recreational marijuana, and this is their draft moratorium that they want to put on a town meeting. So they are looking to do, it looks like a twelve-month moratorium. So I just wanted to show you at least what some other local municipalities are doing, and I've, I've been seeing many other towns on the news doing the same thing.
Yeah, I noticed a lot.
Yeah.
Around, I mean, there's a few host towns that have been, seem to welcome them, and mostly other towns seem to have moratoriums on them.
So would this, would this fall that they can only go into those certain areas?
Even if they did build it, they'd have to build it on Hartwell Street, I would assume, and I think we passed a town meeting like three, four years ago.
If we can get clarification on what exactly that, that was.
And is this for distribution, or is this a growing facility?
That's what we want.
We don't, yeah, that's what we...
We want to make sure about that.
That's what we're not sure about.
Okay.
Shavon, did you have something?
No.
Okay.
And then, just back to medical marijuana, again, if this is something that does come up. So I included just information about the whole entire process. It's been, it's a pretty lengthy process for people that are trying to have these kinds of facilities in Massachusetts, so I just printed off some information from the state website, frequently asked questions, there's some information here, information for municipalities, it says guidance for municipalities regarding the medical use of marijuana. There's also a list of all of the registered marijuana dispensaries that are across the state that were granted licenses by the state. So, a lot of these will be coming online pretty soon, and as far as recreational goes, I mean, really, all I have for you is just the sample moratorium. There's just nothing that we can really report yet, and we just don't know what's going to happen on the state level, but we've been paying attention to see what might come and, you know, what we might be able to do on the local level, just to sort of try to be able to regulate that. We're obviously very concerned about recreational marijuana, and in particular, the edibles that look exactly like gummy bears and don't really have specific packaging requirements. So I think that, you know, there's some people that would say that marijuana doesn't lead to opioid use, but I think in my world, in my business, and everything that I've read, it's a gateway drug, and, you know, I understand that there are some people that feel a need for having medical marijuana, but I think when it comes to recreational, I'm definitely very worried about our young people getting involved in that, so I definitely think there's more to come on that topic. So as soon as we find out more information, we'll definitely share it with all of you. We just don't have anything right, right now from the state.
I'd just like to get the, if we can get all the information together, where it is, well, and we can discuss moratorium, you know, at a further date, another select committee or something like that, so I think it's important. I think it's something we definitely need to get a hold of, in front of, too.
There's already an issue, I saw on the news in Boston, about apartment buildings now. The halls are filled with smell of marijuana where there's kids living, so there's huge issues that they're working on.
Well, it's difficult, even now, with, we get calls all the time from, and I responded to a situation here in, in West Boylston, actually, a couple of years ago, where, you know, people who are sharing walls in apartment buildings or townhouses, all of their ventilation systems are connected, and, you know, we do get calls from people that say, you know, my child has asthma, or I have COPD, and the smoke's traveling, and there's a really big movement to have public housing go smoke-free. Actually, your housing authority did that a couple of years ago. Some people are saying you can just only smoke outside in that situation, some people are saying you can't smoke at all. I think offering smoking cessation and support is really important when people do those kinds of policies. But I think what we're starting to see now is that a lot of landlords are putting into their leases, the public, I mean, private landlords, that they don't want people smoking, and this is part of the problem, is because people are, you know, it's, it's traveling, and, you know, people, it's, it's more of a hazard to have a tenant that smokes because of fire hazard, and then, when people move out, they have to repaint, you know, try and change the blinds, et cetera, from, from the stains. But it is, it's a very challenging situation, and, you know, this is kind of what's happening, is now you have this marijuana, you know, people using marijuana, and it's kind of the same thing, it's the same thing, it's smoke, it's traveling, and, you know, unless there's some kind of language in a lease, it's very difficult, especially when something's been legalized, to say you can't do that. So it's kind of the same idea as tobacco. It has to be something that the landlord has to put in the lease.
Anybody else have questions? Anybody else, Anita, do you have any?
Thank you, Karen.
Yeah, if you want me to come back, or I can share whatever information we get with Anita, whatever you need, let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for these documents.
Yeah, sure.
Anita, do you know if the two licenses are here?
Yes.
Both are? Okay, I guess, Mr. Datus, this is a request for transit vendor and common picturalist license for two locations, one twelve Church Street and forty-two West Boylston Street.
If I can add to that also, there'd be a third location, which would be on the town common during the concerts on the common. I'm working with the Parks Department now to, to be able to do that during the concerts.
Nancy, that can be done right now? That can be just added to it?
I thought we were going to wait till we got the sign off from the Parks Commission?
Okay, I mean, I have, I have, I have all the signatures now.
You've got them already?
Yeah.
Oh, perfect. Okay, then we can go ahead with it.
We can add that.
Because according to our policy, we need to get that permission, because he has to fill up, fill out the Parks Facility Request Form, so that's great, perfect. We can add that on then.
So you'll be in connection with the concerts on the common?
Correct.
Okay. So what exactly are you looking to do?
To operate a hot dog cart at those three locations. What I asked was for, you know, seven days a week, eight to eight, until I can get an idea of what the busy times are, and then, you know, adjust that accordingly.
And what forty-two West Boylston Street is?
At the manor, at the end of the driveway, at the manor.
And one twelve Church Street?
That's at, on the Boylston Lot, Masonic Lodge.
Does anybody have any questions in regards to this?
Everybody's...
Everybody's, before the Manor, don't you think they will lose business?
No, Savis is...
They are okay with that?
Yes, actually, Savis is my commercial kitchen to prepare the food, so...
I thought, you know, if you put a store over there...
It's a different clientele.
These, these locations, you have permission from the owners?
I do, yes.
My question. You have permission.
I think I submitted both consent forms with, with my packet.
Is this a new startup for you, or?
Very new, yes.
Okay, can I, why did you pick those three locations?
Well, Savis at the Manor is, is the one that's helped me out quite a bit with that, and he offered that spot. The Church Street one, initially I was gonna use that location as, you know, the nearest proximity to the concerts on the common, if, if that, that didn't go through, and it seems like that's gonna go through, so...
I'm a little concerned about traffic on Route 12. Are you expecting the people to drive in?
No, I've, I've, I've got the, I'm working with the Parks Department now to be right, to be right on the common during the, during the concerts.
No, I meant Route 12 at, at the Manor.
You're gonna be going into the parking lot?
Inside the parking lot, that's correct.
All right, so we don't have to worry?
Right.
It's just like a Dairy Queen.
No, it's gonna be right, right inside the parking lot. If you, if you're facing the Manor, it's the area to the left, there's, there's a row of parking spots that are rarely used.
One truck?
It's a, it's a, it's a car, it's not a truck, it's a, it's a, it's a car.
But it's gonna rotate amongst the three?
Correct, yep.
Can you, with the time you put from eight to eight?
Eight to eight, just...
You'll never probably open?
No, just to kind of get an idea of what, you know, it might be...
How many hot dogs you sell at eight?
Excuse me?
How many hot dogs you sell?
You know, but there's setup, there'd be setup times, so maybe it might be nine o'clock, it might take an hour or so for, you know, the setup, so I just kind of, I just did that as a range.
You don't have hot dogs to work with?
Yeah.
Maybe I'll start when he opens at eight. Okay, anybody else have any questions?
I know you said at the Masonic Lodge, are you gonna be in their parking lot?
Yeah, right.
Okay, so I'm just trying to figure out how people would find you.
Well, it's kind of the same, you know, we had, we had a yacht sale here last week, and it's, it's, it's pretty noticeable from, from, from the main road, you know, just like when we sell the Christmas trees, it's, you know, it's, you know, a cot with, you know, the brightly colored umbrellas and stuff on it, it'll, it'll draw our attention.
Okay, okay.
And after the, whatever happens tonight, when do you feel you're gonna start?
I have to go, I'm working with the Board of Health now, so he, he does the inspections, I believe, on Mondays and Wednesdays, so as soon as I can coordinate with him to do the inspection on the cot.
Okay. Anita, do you have anything to add to this?
No questions.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve the license.
Second.
And that's for the three locations, that's adding the new location.
Yes.
Have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, good luck, sir.
Congratulations.
Next is, I'll just jump to a request from Anthony Sarabian for a common vicular license for Frozone, 184 West Boylston Street, something 17.
Suite 17.
Suite 17, okay. That's fine. And you're from Frozone?
I am, I'm gonna be the owner and operator of it.
Okay, what's your name?
Anthony Sarabian.
Okay, you are, okay. Tell us a little about it.
So it's gonna be a self-serve frozen yogurt store, which is, with a little twist, instead of going and building your own yogurt and then putting it on a scale and paying by the ounce, you're gonna get a cup with a set price, fill it up to the top with as much as you can fit in there, and you know what you're gonna pay every time. And then, another aspect, where I'm gonna be making gelato daily in the back, I'm gonna be baking gelatos and sorbets, delicious product, and then I'm also gonna be selling Italian ice, smoothies, and milkshakes. We also are gonna have protein shakes for the people who are leaving Planet Fitness if they're interested, and then energy shakes, which are basically like a coffee, but instead of tasting like coffee, it'll taste like a smoothie.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Is this a same question, is this a startup business, or have you done this before?
This is a startup business.
Have you ever worked in this industry before?
No.
Okay.
You won't be in a couple of weeks.
I will be in a couple of weeks, that's right.
Is it, is it a, is it just this one operation by itself, or is this like a...
It's one operating by itself today, we plan on in the future, opening another one.
Okay.
It's, so it's presently not a franchise?
Presently not a franchise, correct.
Okay, so you're starting this yourself, okay.
Correct.
Can I?
Are you all set with the planning board?
Yes, I believe so.
Have you submitted the ASBilt?
That's being...
The ASBilt is being worked on, I sent an email to everybody, that's gonna take a little bit, because it's not just an ASBilt for that location, it's the ASBilt for the whole plaza, because it encompasses part of 2009's fit-ups that we did in the parking lot. So in other words, it's, it's not just that building that we're doing an ASBilt on, we're doing an ASBilt for the whole plaza, because we did the infrastructure, a lot of the infrastructure in 2009, so we could put pad sites up in front.
Yeah, but you are working on this business for a year or so, right?
Yes.
More than a year or so?
Yes, but this is...
So, by, if we had to give a license, we do need to, you need to get to the planning board or get to the ASBilt, right?
The ASBilt, it's not something they can do in a day, they've been...
I agree, it's not, we cannot...
But we've made changes constantly for the last year, and since 2009, so they gotta compile all the changes that have been made and put them on a plan, and that's not a small site, it's a 25-acre site, we're not talking about a single building, they've been, all the surveying part is done, all the work now is to put the, compile everything together and make the drawing.
How much time you made to...
I'm going to get a letter from Liston. I would suspect, the last day that they were there surveying was the day I sent the email, which was a few days ago, and I would say a couple of weeks for them to make the drawings complete, because they're, they're, they're putting in everything, the new islands that were put in because of Cumberland Farms, it's not just a matter of, if it was just that building...
I don't, I don't understand that in a, you do, you are waiting from last year to open up the store, so I do totally understand, but any business to start, you have to be clear of all the formalities.
I understand that, but we're looking for an ASBilt for the whole plaza, we're not looking for an ASBilt for just that store, it's a, it's a matter of timing, okay, there's, we can't be doing an ASBilt complete until it's done complete, and with time, but they gotta draw it, again, if it was just that building, it's probably a couple-day job, but it, because they've been surveying out there for three, four weeks now, three, four times a week, and this isn't a small job to do an ASBilt for that plaza, and that's what they're doing, it's, you know, so you've gotta understand that a little bit, is...
I would recommend, you know, maybe we should put a condition that whatever may be the period he is requesting, maybe we should ask him to submit the ASBilt, so I have no problem in, he, he need the business, so he's been waiting for a year, so no, I have no issue in starting the business, but at some point, you know, he has to submit the ASBilt.
Just, I just, just first, can you identify yourself?
Oh, yeah, Sarabian, I own the property. Sarabian real.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hatt?
I, I don't see any sense in holding his project.
I'm not asking to hold it, but...
Well, I, I just think that's something that's a separate issue, I think this is, he's in front of us for a license for the Frozone, is, is, is not in front of us for the...
But the building is not complete, can we give you a license? If the other boards are not...
The building inspector has signed off on the building.
No, not yet.
Monday.
Well, they won't, won't be able to open, that's probably one of the conditions, they will have to sign off on the building before they can open, obviously, the...
Just, just before we go on, is that usually under these licenses, do we usually ask the planning board to give us input on properties?
We ask the building inspector, and he enforces the bylaw, the bylaws of the town.
And one of the letters in here are from the building inspector? I see the, I think these are from the police chief.
What we do is, we hold every license until the building inspector gives them a certificate of occupancy, and at that point, then we give the license out. He's the trigger, we don't give anything out until he tells us he's satisfied, he's the only enforcement officer.
So this, this issue we're talking about here is the planning board, not, is it the building inspector?
No, 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 to get the, get to the pla, building inspector...
Okay.
So, so ASBilt has to be done...
So I guess he won't give the...
To go to the, go to the building inspector.
That's true.
So before, without an ASBilt, the building inspector should not issue one?
Oh, well, that's, okay, that's up to the building.
So, so to be it up completely.
If I may, then...
Occupants.
Whether or not we have, there's an ASBilt, is not a concern of me, and shouldn't be a concern of this board, because that's a concern of the building inspector. If the building inspector says, "I don't have an ASBilt, I'm not signing off on this," the building inspector's not gonna sign off on it. As far as us issuing a, a common vic license, I personally don't care about the ASBilt, I care what the building inspector says. If he says, "It's good to go," it's good to go.
The thing is, and my question is, without a building inspector's approval, can we issue a license?
We'll issue it, Nancy won't give it, though, until the building...
We're voting to authorize a license, but that, that will only be issued when the building inspector says the building is ready to be opened.
He's not gonna move on an occupancy permit.
No, I have no problem in opening a business, but it has to be compiled, all the compliance should be done.
What I could ask is that if he gave us two weeks after, you know, if, you know, we open, shut it down, but, but, you know, I'm sure...
No, no, no.
I'm, I'm pretty sure two weeks, he's gonna be done.
That's fair enough.
Can you possibly get me a letter to give to you guys and to the building inspector, as to when they're gonna finish?
That's the main concern, and I agree with Mr. Crowley here, the only thing I would say, one step further is, I personally do care about these ASBils, but we don't have, it's not in our, in front of us, as is just a license. I mean, I think for the townspeople and for the residents, we do care, and for future projects...
We know we have to do it, and we've been...
Working on it.
Working on it, but as I said, if it was just for that one building, it wouldn't be an issue, but it's, we're doing the whole site, and then we're gonna give separately included with it is Cumberland Farms site.
Was there one for Cumberland Farms given to the town?
Cumberland Farms did one, yes, but we're gonna incorporate some of it into our business.
Great, that's good.
So that's, that's what's taken.
Mr. Hatt?
In my eyes, we have two separate situations, we have somebody coming before us for a license...
That's all we have, right?
Right, that's all we have, you're the owner of the property, that, to me, there's two separate issues, and I don't wanna stand in the way of you opening, you know, this business, but I just want people to understand, it's two different issues from where I'm sitting.
No question.
I make a motion to approve.
I do need to add on, you know, it could be a two different issues, but the thing is, you know, if a building is, a building is in a defective building, or building without a permit, or building without necessary permit from the necessary boards, can we issue a permit?
Excuse me one second, though, you know what, in regards to the building, if I remember correctly, we submitted an ASBilt of the foundation to the planning board to make sure it was placed where it had to be placed for that building, but what you're looking for now is a complete ASBilt. We did an ASBilt for the foundation, that was one of the requirements we did at one of the years.
That's a same plan review, I'll say. That's a same plan review.
No, no, after...
Okay.
Okay, I just, the only, the only other thing, again, this has been through the planning board, it's been through the, I'm just curious, are you a little concerned about the parking? How much parking right in front of the store?
12 spots, I believe, don't hold me to that, but a 12 spot, but we also have a dip, we're gonna have signs saying additional parking in the main lot of the building.
Yeah, 'cause I, I foresee that, that parking lot to get filled.
Hopefully, that's my issue, that'll, that'll be a good one.
Hopefully, I'm just, yeah, I'm just curious.
Yeah, it's a good problem to have, so we're gonna have...
Again, they're not gonna park on that, you're gonna make sure they don't park on that area where people sit and...
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, right, it would be...
Yeah, or on the sidewalk, yeah, that won't.
And if you can just, I see the hours here, you're gonna be open up 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Sunday.
To start, it's actually gonna be 12 to 9, but eventually, in the summer, I believe, it's gonna be 11 to 10.
You're gonna be open year-round, obviously?
Year-round, as of right now, yes, correct.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the license.
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Lauren, you can come back up, we can run back to you, I believe, is there any, anything else, anybody from the public?
We don't have the gentleman here regarding the street light yet, so I think it's safe to bring him back up.
Okay. You're back.
What was first on the...
That's mine.
Parks policy first?
I'm not telling you. Chapter 90 funding status.
Do you have the, my little spreadsheet? It looks like this.
Is it in the original information or in this folder?
Should've been given to you last Friday.
It's gonna be in the folder.
Says chapter 90 funds as of 5/12/2017.
If you can walk them, no, just walk them through the numbers, they can be...
We have, currently available, we have $456,484.81 cents for fiscal year 18, the state's gonna give us $290,085, a total of $746,569.81, and that's, that's it. And then, I've got also how long, I don't know if you have it, but it's got the two projects that we're proposing tonight, too.
Got the Newton Street and the Library.
We'll have, if we do both those projects, we'll have $308,870 left.
It's coming at fiscal 18, $290.
How much did we spend last year? Because I know we spent, we did a lot of...
Seven hundred and seven thousand.
Last year.
So we had, we had 1.2 million at the beginning?
Yeah, well, some of, I've cleaned up some projects, that money was still sitting in some projects, Leslie and I have cleaned up a bunch of projects, so some of that money's come back in, and we have a couple more left, not, not, no big ones, but that got us to the $456.
Shall I?
So what year are we spending it budget-wise? Are we in...
Depends on what you approve tonight.
Okay.
If you approve Newton Street drainage and the library sidewalks, that's a total of
For what ye, for...
Fiscal year, well...
It's why...
It fits under what we currently have available.
Okay.
Does not rely on the new FY18 money.
Okay, that's where, that was my next question, that's why I was trying to figure out where...
It just fits under that.
Right.
Hopefully, the bits coming, yeah, $456, and it's $437.
Okay.
But as of July, we get the $290.85.
Okay.
Do we have, you said we might need some of that money for complete streets, though, right?
Well, it's an option, we don't have to use any for complete streets, we can just, we can stay within a complete streets budget, which is what I think we kinda plan on doing, because we don't know what's gonna happen with the roadway plan they're doing for us, what they're gonna recommend, and there's some stuff that I'd like to do, like you saw the lower end of Prospect Street, and then the upper end of Prospect Street are both bad, underneath the Woodland Bridge, 190 Bridge on Woodland is pretty bad, and also down on Thomas Street, breaking up pretty bad, I kinda like to do some areas down there, so I wasn't really planning on using chapter 90 fund for this complete streets at this point.
Then I, then I guess, going back to the complete streets, I'd go back to that question where it says, there's only one that says other funding source amount, 253,000, where would we be getting that money?
If, if we do that full project, and...
It's 600, it's 653,000.
And if, remember, we said that CMR PC put that pricing together, assuming that And if, remember, we said that CMR PC put that pricing together, assuming that we would do paving of the roadway throughout the section, wherever we do sidewalk improvements, we won't need to do roadway paving in each of those areas, so we likely will not need to spend any additional money.
We just had to identify another source for that?
They, what the state wants to know is that if they go ahead and approve us for a tier-three grant, they wanna know that we're willing to commit some money to the project if needed. So, you know, we, we will have to commit to that, but what, the way CMR PC explained it to us was that when we actually choose the projects that we wanna put in under this four hundred thousand dollar grant, we are not obligated to include the paving in that. We can make the grant money go farther by putting in just the sidewalk work that we originally intended it to be.
So it's basically check-a-block for, the grant.
Which is not unusual with grants.
Can I ask you a question? Go ahead.
So, uh, what are the streets we need, need paving, overlay?
I, I haven't really checked them all, but those are the ones that stand out.
We do need money for that, right?
Well, we have, we have our, uh, our two ninety, and I don't know how far that'll go. I mean, we did nine streets last year for seven hundred thousand, so obviously, we're not gonna get nine streets this year.
But the prospect-
We only milled one area, and that was at the, uh-
Yeah, the main road, Prospect Street looks very bad.
Yeah, Prospect does.
That's a lot, that's a lengthy road.
There's a section at the bottom, up and to, just about the golf course, and you can skip over that, and then just, when you're coming up to Woodland, it's, it's pretty bad.
How much it might cost?
I don't know, I haven't looked at it yet.
Coming down the hill too, on, by Franklin is a big-
Right, that's, that's where I would start, going up the hill, that whole area, and then-
You'll just fill that for once, uh, did you already, there was a, some issues.
Oh, we patched it a couple times, yeah, but we, we plan on milling it and paving it, but I haven't looked at that for pricing yet.
I think the Newton Streets cost a lot, right?
Yeah, you have that in your package, so.
If we were to approve the Newton Street drainage and the library parking, and the bids come in higher than the four fifty-six that is currently available, can we still enter into the contract in anticipation of the money that's coming in?
No, we can't sign a contract unless we know we have the money in hand to do it. Well, we could afford to move ahead, one. So you might wanna, when you vote to approve it, if you do tonight, you might wanna prioritize which one you wanna move ahead with first. But, you know, I think the important thing to recognize tonight is that, you know, we really do not know what our priority streets are gonna be for using the remainder, any balance of the chapter ninety money. We won't know that until we get our updated pavement management plan in place. It's gonna do an updated PCI index of all the roadways in town, and that's gonna help Butch and you as a board decide what projects you wanna do this year, or what ones you feel you can push off to future years with future funding. So really, tonight is just to identify that if you move ahead and approve these two projects, the Newton Street drainage and the library parking, you'll have, moving forward, about three hundred and eight thousand dollars to use to consider for those projects that the pavement management plan will end up recommending. So, you know, these two projects that Butch has on the table tonight are ones that you've previously talked about and asked him to prepare design work and move this forward.
But there are, many roads are in bad conditions. If you don't fix it now,
Correct.
we may end up, end up spending a lot more the following year.
And that's why we're, that's why we're doing the updated pavement management plan. We are going through a thorough review of each roadway, getting its pavement condition index, and that plan will put together a very descriptive list of the type of work that needs to be done on each of our roadways and the estimated project cost. So Butch will come back to us later this year, as soon as that plan is finalized, and he'll say, "These are the results, based on these results, these are our worst roads, I recommend we do this, this, and this." We don't know what that this, this, and this is gonna be yet, so we need that information before we make any assumptions about what other paving projects we'll do this year.
Well, it's this, this, and this, up to three hundred and eight thousand, because I don't think we're going to town meeting to ask for additional money.
No, no, we would be, if it exceeds what we have, then we know that we add that to the list.
Just this and this.
And it's wait, and we wait till we get the next year of funding to get that done.
I think, I think, you know, maybe we should consider fixing the roads rather than spending a bulk of money on the Newton Street. It did wait it for a while.
Okay, when we get to that vote, we can discuss that.
I think, just the opposite, I think we've been promising to these people in Newton Street and, uh, the parking for the, down by the library for a long time. We, these people have come to us for a long time, and I think those are the two worst places. I think it's the best place to start for these projects, and I think it's time we do those.
And part of the drainage will be a whole, the whole street will be repaved?
Yes.
How old are quotes for the drainage and, uh, parking? I mean, are they?
There are no quotes yet.
No, we don't have that.
The, the estimates that you have, how, those are?
Yeah, but it's on that sheet.
No, how, how long, how old are those estimates?
Are you just putting it together with?
Yeah, they just, they just come up within the last six months or less.
So you're taking into account current pricing of stuff?
Yes, yeah, LEI did all that, yeah.
Okay, so that was under chapter ninety funding status. The next item is Newton Street draining project, which we've talked about, and then the next one is library parking on Newton, on Newton Street project. So, do we wanna, do you have anything else to add to those?
No, do you have the numbers?
Uh, yes.
It's on the sheet anyways, it's the same, it's just it's the actual sheet from LEI.
They didn't give us, I don't know this.
That is very detailed, that, that's all I know.
I think it's missing.
It was in the agenda package, that was, that was sent out to us, the regular agenda, Friday agenda package.
It's the same, it's on my, 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 uh, spreadsheet, it's just the official letter from-
So this one, you know, we're looking at here is Newton Street drainage, which should be a total of three ninety-five, construction contingency of ten percent.
It's on the backside, if anybody's having trouble finding it.
On the back of one of here.
In one of the package, on the back.
So the public knows it's a very detailed, um, listing with, uh, unit costs and not just a, throwing around a piece of paper, it takes into account, you know, everything.
I can't read it anyhow, so.
Three hundred and thirty-five.
Well, Pat and I haven't, have no problem reading it.
I'm having no problem. You wanna borrow my glasses, Tom?
So, yeah, test bits, every, everything's included in there.
You're making more friends with bigger forms, you know that?
Well, we could ask you. So do we want, uh, do I hear a mo- do you want a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion that the Newton Street project be approved and be the first project that we do with our chapter ninety money.
Sure.
Motion and a second, now any other discussion?
Can I ask a question on the, um, parking, or is that gonna be a separate?
It'd be a separate.
Okay, just, okay, thank you.
So this is the Newton Street, as Pat made the motion. Raj, do you have anything to add to that?
I think, you know, if I were, you know, I would consider fixing the other roads first, being this one is a, you know, four hundred thousand dollar project, but if the board wants to, I have no issue with that.
Yeah, I mean, the road definitely needs it, the drainage-
If we don't fix the roads, you know, it will be a big, we'll be spending more money down there.
On Newton?
Any road, in, no, the, like, Prospect. If you don't fix it this year, next year it will be like a-
I can imagine that would be very-
If you fix it and you have drainage problems, it's just gonna-
Yeah, but that's there for, the drainage issue is there for how many years?
I don't, I don't know, I, I know it's, it's quite a rough road.
The reason the road is so bad.
Right.
Yeah, Newton, Newton's bad, my only concern, and I've made this a hundred times, when we pave that road, it's gonna be a raceway, because right now, the way it is, they fly up there, so.
Yeah, they don't want to fix that road.
We're gonna have, that, let's be prepared. I don't know if we can put some signage or some, I don't know what the answer is. Speed bumps, I, I don't know the answer, but it's gonna, they're gonna fly up there, so. Okay, so I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, then do, I hear a motion that we-
Make a motion to do the, uh, library, around the library.
Library parking?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
What was the total number of spots that that's gonna add? We know?
No, I don't know.
That's down the right, that's down the right side, we're talking about from the library.
Down to that apartment, the old apartment building down there. It's really the only driveway, it's pretty much to the next driveway.
But when, are we gonna eliminate the parking on the other side?
That's the theory, yes. The police were gonna put no parking signs on the other side.
Boy, we're probably getting less spots out of this project, yeah.
I, I had that question, but my, my other thought is, uh, one, are we losing spots, and two, are we just shifting a problem from one side of the street to another, and is it gonna end up people on the right-hand side losing any of their frontage?
Uh, it's all town property.
It is all town, okay, I wasn't sure how that-
There's no driveways on that side, which is ki- it's kinda unique, which is kinda nice.
I'm gonna clarify myself, I'm gonna clarify myself on that. I think we talked about that, and we think there's a lot of parking on the other side, but it's usually cutting into people's driveways.
Right.
And blocked, you know, because-
Right.
The driveway's here and the person's parking close, so we think there's a lot of parking over there when we see it, but I'm not sure if there is. I don't know, I don't know about spots, though, if we have that answer.
Yeah, we have less distance, but we have no driveways, so we should be able to-
We just have one.
Close them up, it's, yeah, the one we're gonna end at, it's that-
The house right next door to the library, isn't there a driveway?
No.
No, it's on the other side.
Yeah, it's on, uh, Central Street.
Central Street side?
So it is all just, yeah, so probably it'll be, and it'll be on the side of the library.
Yeah, and there'll be a sidewalk there, so the kids can get out of the cars, get on the sidewalk and walk to the library without having to cross the street, which is-
It'll definitely be safer.
Yeah, I needed to, is that what you-
I was just gonna say that you're right, that we had, you know, discussion that, um, based on the linear feet of sidewalk that was gonna be added, that we felt that it would be equal to the amount of spots that were on the other side of the street.
And then, and then we won't have the issue with blocking driveways and walking across the street.
Trying to cross the street there when traffic is, can be pretty fast.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Nobody. Policy on snow removal on sidewalks?
Yes. Well, the packet I gave you unfortunately has been amended.
This is-
The new one with the map, yeah, just.
So the, the one with the minus-two font, oh, it's coming up to it. So we'll take, I'll take one of those, and we'll get rid of this.
This is so much nicer.
Yeah, I like this one already.
I need a reading glasses.
Huh?
I need reading glasses.
I didn't say I didn't.
Reading glasses.
I didn't say I didn't.
So this, the map that was, there's a new map in this one? Yep.
Yeah, the only difference really is that I talked to the schools, and they can't guarantee me who's gonna be walking from year to year versus footfall stops from year to year, so I'm talking to some of the towns, at least the one you guys are trying to get it at. The one mile line is basically right here.
What street?
So this is already out, that's a, our building is basically at the one mile from the school. So anything, this is Temple Street going up, so this will be eliminated, I can show the map that way.
Is it up to school, it's one mile, so you have to take a bus?
The only real change is, from the original one I gave you that you look at last Friday, it didn't have Newton Street on there. It didn't have any decent prospect, gotta come back and, ties a whole center in, but people, we don't know where they're gonna be walking from from year to year, so we get the whole central setups, everything to go forward to the school. Just, I just, mountain app, so those will be your twenty-four hour sidewalks, minus this piece. And then, this is, this blue here, as you can, I don't know, can't see it on TV, but this is, uh, Sterling going up to Horseshoe. I left that in for the, those will be, we'll do those as soon as we can, on straight now. We won't come back on the town. These residents here will do, as soon as we can, because it's a Friday storm, school opens up.
So they, so the public can, they just leave it there, just so the public can see, if you stand there, perfect. So the red, the, that's gonna be?
Yeah, the red, minus this piece.
Yep.
Do the twenty-four hour sidewalks, but it's not gonna change much. And we can do those in, uh, two to four hours, depending on how much snow. So it's basically a four-hour schedule. And then we won't come back and do the other pieces, this piece here, this piece here, this piece here, that's it. We used to do this piece here, but it doesn't go anywhere, so whatever, and then you add, and then all these other pieces are removed.
So, the one, the other ones, you're gonna be able to do during regular time?
Yeah, we'll do anything but the red, this, 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 we'll do in regular time.
Now that, that one at the bottom's eliminated, I believe, under the new map.
Oh, I, I did wanna say also, this, this piece up here.
It's got a piece connected to it.
The last piece in there, that, that's a bus stop.
No, I'm saying underneath, there's this part here, you have a piece on the map.
Yeah, this piece here?
Yeah, that's gone, right?
That's gone.
Okay, so when you say as soon as possible, if you don't get to it, the twenty-four hours could get done quicker?
Well, if it's during the week, and the storm ends, like, say, at two o'clock, and, or maybe, you know, it's eight days in the morning, um, during the week, we'll do it right away, you know, quicker.
The school ones?
The school, no, schools will always do right after the storm.
Okay.
Now, if we really have no choice, if there's any waters. And then the bus stops, I have a blurb in there about the bus stops, the, uh-
Will change.
Just that, yeah, every August, they're gonna let you know where the people walking through, where the bus stops are. We'll go out and see if there's any sidewalks we need to do in those areas, and get those.
Um, that was one of my questions, but on the map that you just handed out,
Yeah.
like, there's, like, a little square around Newton Street and Scarlet Street. And I was wondering what, it looks like it's almost inked, I was wondering if that meant anything?
That is, that was on the map before I did that, that is, uh, that's the library.
Oh, okay, okay, thanks.
And the only changes in here, this here, are on page, so the third page, section G, is your sidewalk section. That basically says what I just said, and that, but, I wrote at the bottom, all of the sidewalks will not be cleared by the town. And then I put a stipulation that if we ever do start cleaning sidewalks, they need to be at least five feet, because if they're not, we'll tear grass on both sides. And I got a lot of complaints about that this year. So there needs to be at least a five-foot sidewalk, probably shouldn't fit on.
What are you, what are you saying about sidewalks that, on, on the plan?
Well, I just put that little note at the lot, the last note, that so if we decide to do other sidewalks in the future, they need to be at least five feet.
Oh.
So if they put new sidewalks, of course, they are, that's pretty much the spec nowadays. Our machine's like four foot, two, four foot three. So if we go over, if we stay, if you go under four feet, we're digging grass on both sides, or on one side or the other, which is not good. There's gonna be a lot of complaints about that.
Are we putting anything in the policy for, like, business, businesses that have sidewalks in front of them?
We have, we, I don't have it, most towns don't have a policy, they leave it up to the, the residents or the businesses. I think Sturbridge had a policy, but they don't enforce it. It was ten-dollar fine, and then, uh, actually, I need that to get to.
So businesses can choose not to even do their sidewalks?
Yeah, it's pretty much up to them.
Yeah, but what business, what business would wanna do that?
But do we need to have a bylaw like that? But other towns-
Sterling, Sterling had a policy too, but they don't enforce it, so, basically, nobody had a policy.
But other towns, you know, they do find that-
Whistlers.
Yeah.
The cities, the cities do, yeah, Boston.
For residents, businesses too.
Yeah, everything, yeah.
It seems like the small towns don't, don't deal with that much.
That's right.
So I think a business would wanna do it, it's a good business.
Well, and if we get the sidewalks we just talked about, we may be-
Yeah, adding to it.
Adding this, because that's gonna be one from-
We will be adding, because the street will be part of it, and then on Newton Street, and some others, off the Walmart, maybe, would be one that I might wanna do. We'll talk about that when that happens. And the other thing was the hydrants, I don't know if you're interested in looking at the hydrant.
So just in regards to this, now what do we, do we have to have a, now that we have this, we have to have a public hearing?
We have to have a public hearing, so we'll go ahead and schedule it.
So we don't need any motion to schedule it, we'll just, we'll just have, you'll set it up in a future meeting?
Yeah.
One more question, uh, oh, no, because I don't have hydrants on our list, but if you, is hydrants part of the snow removal?
We did make some adjustments under section H, just clarification under the fire hydrant.
Yeah, I didn't really change much of it, I just kinda clarified who does what and who's responsible for what. The water, the water district's responsible for the hydrants, they're responsible for clearing them. The fire department, on their own, goes out and does any shoveling that needs to be done. The water district uses their plows, and they plow back on both sides, and the fire department will go in and clear whatever needs to be done after that. And then I put in that, um, the DPW will assist in the snow removal around fire hydrants, in extreme cases, at the request of the West Boston Water District, so we're, we're willing to help.
And then you put also in here, which I was gonna ask, town, the town encourages-
Right.
the residents declare any hydrants within, yes.
Yes, the fire chief, uh, apparently has a program trying to get that to happen, so I thought I'd add that, so.
No, I, I know in our neighborhood, I mean, the person that's, happens to be out, goes and tries to do it.
Yeah, in my, in my town, we do too.
Right.
And that's it for the-
Does anybody have any questions, in regards to, to have a public hearing anyway?
Just, I think it might be something to note before we're entering, um, next winter, to make sure that we get that message out, that it's, call the water department, or whoever to call if you're fire hydrant, you know, if you're elderly in the neighborhood and you can't get to that fire hydrant, if we could get some of that message out, or the water department, somebody, to say, "This is who you call." Um, I think that would be helpful to the residents.
I'm gonna guarantee it's not gonna snow anymore, but, yeah.
Don't say that.
I don't know what, I don't know what your, uh, perspective takes.
The tracker has been very good. I think that's all we have.
That's all I have, yeah.
From you, anybody have any questions, other than what's on here for future? Nope, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
The eight o'clock street light, are we, are we expecting someone here on that or are we just, no? Okay, so, street light request, 88 Pine Arden Drive. Nina, do you have anything to want?
This request had originally gone into the light department and the light manager suggested that it be brought before the board of selectmen. So it was a request by Mr. Mike Brizel, who lives at 88 Pine Arden Drive. His concern was that it's quite dark in the area, there's a lot of young children in the neighborhood and a lot of dog walkers and activity. And he had received some initial feedback from Jonathan Fitch, the general manager, that the light department certainly could add a pole-mounted light off of one of the pad mounted transformers that's there in the area, if the board of selectmen approved adding that additional light fixture because the board of selectmen pays for the annual cost of our, our streetlights in town. So we asked the chief to go out and check the area and he concurred that it would be a place that would benefit from a streetlight in that area. It is quite dark at night and he would recommend that we move ahead and add a streetlight to that area.
Anybody have any questions?
Did Jonathan give any indication that it would change what we're currently paying the light department for our lights?
He did not give indication, but with one additional streetlight, I can't imagine it's going to make any impact, especially when the light...
The new LED.
They're moving to exchange all of the existing, you know, regular lights to the LEDs, which are going to reduce our cost anyways, so at this point, we think it's going to be pretty much cost neutral.
I've always, I don't know the answer to this, I don't know if anybody else, why sometimes a streetlight will just go off and then go back on again? I don't know if they get hot, or, because I don't think it's going to happen with LED.
Yeah, well, it's good.
I just see it happen and they, and they turn it back on.
Maybe a, the solenoid that is the light sensitive just needs to be reset.
Yeah, we can ask.
Is there any cost with this being installed to us? There was no detail about cost of installation, but they've never charged the town in the past. Installation. It's more just the cost to us in terms of the operation of the... Okay, I thought so.
There's a poll there, they're just adding, they're just adding the like, adding the on to it.
And there's an existing, the important thing is that the transformer's close by, so that makes it easier.
Yeah, oh, I didn't think the poll was there. Okay.
Okay. Do we have, do I hear a motion? Some more?
Second.
Hear a motion, a second and any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Recognize the acceptance of the following donations for the ban stand committee and approve the expenditures of these funds for general purposes. $250 from Beverly Gooddale, $250 from the committee to elect Jim O'Day, $250 from Oriole Health, $250 from Premier Optical, $250 from Webster First, $250 from Reservoir Garage, and $250 from Clinton Savings Bank. So we recognize them. Mike, do we forget the vote on these?
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the donations.
Second.
Have a motion and a second and any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I'd just like to thank all those groups for helping out the ban stand committee, that's, that's a great program. Recognize the acceptance of $950 in personal donations from various individuals of the community to the Culture Council on Aging for the period covering January 2017 through March 2017. Approve expenditures of these funds from their gift account to aid in the events and activities.
Some more?
Second.
Have a motion in a second and any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, consider voting to sign a community contribution agreement by, by and between the trustees of the College of the Holy Cross and the Town of West Boylston for a voluntary contribution of $60,000 over five years to the library and approve expenditures of these funds. Any discussion?
I'm wondering, is this the contract written by our town attorneys? How this works?
No, I didn't bother to put this before the town attorneys.
No, neither did.
So you're comfortable with the language?
The language basically just details what the intended use of the funds would be for, and it's to extend the library hours on Saturdays for nine months of the year. It would be open from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM, and on Saturdays during the summer months, June, July, and August, it would be 9:00 AM to noon. And it specifies that the gift, the annual gift of the $12,000 for five years is meant to cover any expenses related to these extended Saturday hours for the library. It cannot be used for other library purposes unless it's directly related to the extended hours at the library. And it just, you know, it's just a standard language that recognizes that, you know, this type of educational mission fits perfectly with the Holy Cross. And if, you know, it does provide some language that if for some reason the town is not able to move ahead with using the, the funds in the stated purpose that we would let them know, and that would release Holy Cross from their obligation.
We're not going to let that happen.
Make a motion to sign the agreement?
Second.
Have a motion in a second and any other discussion?
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
And I think it's, we need to make sure the public understands that this money is for five years, and is Holy Cross saying they would give us anything else during that five years, or is it, this is it? Because there's a big property off our taxes now.
We went through an extensive list of different requests from Holy Cross to see what they might be considering to provide for our community assistance, and this was the project that they'd chosen for the first five years. They did say though, that if there were other smaller requests unique that might occur from year to year, that they would be willing to consider them and to provide some smaller additional community contribution.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, acknowledge receipt of policy and procedures number 4.24, public records request, which has been received and accepted as written by the police union and approved by the Mass Chief of Police Association Council. Anything you want to?
Just, just to say that in the course of looking to update all of the policies the department has with the changes in the public records law, they wanted to make sure that this policy was updated sooner rather than later. It, it's in full compliance with the new public records law. It has been reviewed by the Mass Chief's Police Attorneys, so they concur that it's in concurrence with the law. And it, it jives with what we have put together for policies for other town departments, including the General Town Hall Records Access Officer.
Anywhere motion?
Some more?
Acknowledge receipt, we don't need any motion. Acknowledge receipt, it says?
He's saying that if, if there's no vote taken either way, it goes into effect within 30 days, but I think it would be nice to have the board vote to approve.
Have a motion?
Some more?
Second.
And a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, next item is update on sewer rate study.
All right, so we, per the board's instructions, we did request proposals from, or actually should say quotes, from qualified firms to do the 2017 sewer rate study. We had minimum criteria that we'd established to determine what a qualified firm would be, that the criteria included, it had to be an established firm operated under the current business name and structure for a minimum of five years, had to have staff assigned to the project, we've completed a minimum of three such studies in the past five years, and had to be able to provide appropriate contact, contact information for a minimum of two municipal clients in the past five years. So we did receive three quotes from various firms. The lowest, the low bidder being the firm of tie and bond in the amount of $14,500. And Nancy Lucier did do an extensive records, excuse me, reference check on this company, and their references come back with good reports. So I would be asking the board to vote to approve our moving ahead to develop an agreement with tie and bond to get this sewer rate study done.
Any other questions in regards to that?
Funding, does that come out of the sewer budget or the town budget?
It would, it would come out of the sewer budget.
And I missed it, was there, was there a cost associated with it? I missed that.
The quote, the quote we received from the low bidder, the lowest qualified bidder, was $14,500.
Go ahead.
How long before, do we have any idea how long it would take them to do it and then how long before we get a report?
The request for quotes had asked that the work be done this summer.
Okay.
But I think it also depends on, you know, how quickly we're able to get a signed agreement in place.
Okay.
And how quickly we can get them the necessary information. Obviously, staff will work to support this process as best we can because the sooner we can get this done, the better it is for us in terms of making decisions on any rate adjustments we might want to do for FY '18.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve the, the move on tie and bond?
Second.
Have a motion, a second and any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, read Craig Shipley response letter into the record.
The board recalls that we have several times met with Mr. Craig Shipley, resident in town, to hear his concerns regarding the town's approval and involvement with the regional SEMLA, which provides support to our police department for certain arrests and, and other activities. They, he also had had various concerns regarding the police associations and the reportings that are done to the state on an annual basis. As you know, we have put forward a written response to Mr. Shipley previously to this, but he still, he did come back to the April 5th meeting stating he felt that the town's response had not been adequate. So one of the concerns that we had was that he was making allegations regarding the chief of police. So the board met in the executive session at our May 2nd meeting and with, with an attorney and reviewed the allegations and determined that there was, the allegations were unsubstantiated. And as a result, the board had asked that the town attorney and I put together a letter to Mr. Shipley to state the position that the board has. So I'd like to read this to the record, not only so that it would be part of our minutes, but so that the viewing audience would also hear that the board has taken extensive time and thought in this matter before, you know, providing a final response to Mr. Shipley. So with the chair's permission, I'll read the letter.
Just to clarify, that, that a mistake was made in the letter that went to Mr. Shipley. There's one section that's added to this letter that we're reading into the minutes tonight. That was not...
I'll explain at the end of the reading of the letter.
Okay.
Yeah. So the letter is addressed to Mr. Craig Shipley of 2 Lost Oak Road, West Boylston, dated May 15th. Dear Mr. Shipley, on April 5th, 2017, you appeared before the West Boylston Board of Selectmen to address your ongoing concerns with respect to the above caption matters that you first brought to the board's attention on January 6th, 2016. As you've previously been advised, both verbally and in writing, the board took the remedial steps it deemed necessary and appropriate to address your concerns in the areas that fell under its charge after you brought these issues before the board. While we granted you an audience on April 5th, 2017, the board will no longer entertain discussion from you with respect to the above caption matters, as we believe we have done everything necessary to address your concerns. While you have requested to be placed on the board's agenda for its May 17th meeting to continue your discussion with respect to these issues, as the board considers this matter closed and is moving on to other affairs which require board action, your request to be heard is denied. We have reviewed your allegations that Chief Minnick misrepresented certain matters pertaining to the SEMLA agreement. After discussion and deliberation, we find your allegations to be unsubstantiated. We have full faith in Chief Minnick and support him and the members of the West Boylston Police Department with respect to your concerns. Your request that the town reach out to the Worcester County District Attorney to obtain their opinion as to the legality of arrests made during SEMLA operations and to conduct an audit of the police associations are denied. The board is not desirous of interfering in active prosecutions that the DA has independently determined to be meritorious of their time and attention. As the board does not exercise dominion or control over the police associations, as they are private entities, the board is not in a position to order an audit of how they maintain their financial statements. This letter serves as the board's financial, excuse me, final position to your request for your concerns. Thank you for your attention and anticipated cooperation, and it was signed by the Board of Selectmen. And in reference to the statement that the chair made earlier, in the executive session that the board held, they had asked that the letter include an additional statement, which basically would be that Mr. Shipley was free to refer any concerns he had to an outside agency if he did not accept the board's position with respect to the matters as set forth above. The statement was not included in the letter. Mr. Shipley has requested a, put in a public records request for the minutes of the executive session at the May 2nd meeting, so that will be sent to him. And when that's sent to him, he will see the clear statement made by the board that, you know, no further determination is made by the board, this position is final, and if he wishes to check with other agencies, that is at his discretion. We had one other issue that Mr. Shipley had brought up, and that was dealing with the mailing permit that the town uses from time to time for various different public mailings. And with the chair's permission, I'd like to ask Nancy Lucier to speak to that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. This is a statement that I prepared, following the allegations made by Craig Shipley. And prior to mailing out the mail before our May town meeting, I went to the post office and asked about our use of permit number 38. At that time, I spoke with Amy, who told me there was no issue with the town using permit number 38. I asked her if the postmaster was in, so I could confirm that statement with him. She told me he was not in and that he wouldn't be in after 3 o'clock. The next morning, I called the post office and he told me there was no issue with the town of West Boylston using permit number 38 for our town meeting mailing. When I delivered the mailer to the post office, I spoke with Brian. He also confirmed that there was no issue with the town using permit number 38 for the town mailing. We provide the postage required to cover the mailing. On May 9th, the postmaster stopped by my office telling me that he was there to confiscate the stamp of permit number 38. He had received a complaint from a resident that the town used the permit for the mailing. At the time, I reminded him of our previous conversation, which he recalled, in the fact that I spoke with three individuals up at the post office. To that statement, he replied, quote, "You were provided misinformation by the post office, myself included," end of quote. After that, he made that statement, and I asked the town administrator if she could come into my office, so the postmaster, Dominique DeChai, could repeat his statement, which he did in front of the town administrator. He told me that he spoke with Boston, and he needed to speak with Boston, and he gave me the name of a Carolyn Rankins, who could explain everything. I called Carolyn at 11:51 that day, and she told me that she was aware that three individuals at the post office told us that it was okay to send the town meeting mailer out, as I had previously done for many years with permit number 38, one of whom was the postmaster. She now, she then told me that the town is able to use permit number 38, however, we needed to change the wording on the stamp that we used. So I had a new stamp made, and what you're going to find on your second page is the old stamp was a small little square with an outline around it. The new stamp does not have the outline, and it says P R S T, Marketing Mail, U.S. Post Office Paid on line two. Line three is West Boylston, Mass., and line four is permit number 38. And that's the new stamp that we will be using, so people are still going to see permit number 38 when they get a letter. And this is exactly what Boston told us we needed to do. So going forward, we should be fine, but we're still using permit number 38 per the instructions app from the post office, Ian Boston.
And no one but the town of West Boylston uses that stamp? The town of West Boylston? No one else uses that, that stamp to mail anything?
This stamp?
Yeah.
No. We are going to be the only ones using this new stamp.
Correct.
The permit number will be, still be used by... The permit number will be, still be used by the elder services for their mailings, their new mailings. But they said that we could also use that permit number. But we're the only one using the stamp. Well, did we ever get notification that, I mean, to me, it says the same thing. So it's still the same number. Does, how would we have known this to have changed if three people at the post office told you it was fine? And we've been doing this for many years, correct Nancy? Yes. Okay. I had no idea. And that's why I went again to the post office and spoke to everyone. And, and the postmaster, he, he was very genuine. He came to the office and he said, you know, myself included, I told you you could do that. So they didn't even know that the design, it's basically the design of the stamp. Correct. That's the only, I don't even want to say problem, because it's, it's the only thing that's changed. That's the issue that the town corrected. Right, okay.
It had nothing, this, this change had nothing to do with what was brought up by Mr. Shipley. Where this had nothing to do with that, what we're talking about. It just happened to come out after that they wanted to change the stamp.
When Nancy went to the post office before this recent town meeting mailing, she went to get clarification from the post office because of the allegations that had been made by Mr. Shipley.
In regards to the association using a town stamp?
It were the towns, if you recall, at his last time he was with us, he, he also stated that there was an issue with the town using that stamp as well. So Nancy went, did her due diligence and went to check with the post office to make sure that it was okay. She was told by three different individuals that it was okay. It was not-
I understand that, yeah.
Right, and then we, then apparently Mr. Shipley went to the post office himself, and that was when the postmaster come in.
And the association doesn't use any of our stamps, doesn't use any of our mailing?
The police association had used that, the first stamp several years ago, and they, it was mistakenly done. They have not done it since.
And they knew it.
And they will not be using it moving forward.
Okay. Anybody have any?
So one of the stamps says nonprofit organization, the other one is marketing mail. So the town of West Boylston is a nonprofit, right?
We're a municipality, which is technically different than the term nonprofit.
So the Council on Aging is nonprofit?
Is it the Council on Aging?
Which, this nonprofit organization stamp, who uses it?
The elder services uses that stamp.
So are they nonprofit?
I can't speak to that. All I know is that the U.S. Postal Service has determined that for us moving forward, we should use the revised version of stamp for permit thirty eight.
Yeah, that's another thing.
And from, and from what we see so far, that may change in a month. But right now, we're doing what the-
We are doing exactly what the post office is telling us to.
And it's been all spelt out here at our meeting, that that's what happened, so.
So the market, the new stamp, any of the town office can use it?
Any, any appropriate use for the town of West Boylston, correct?
It's under the control of the administrator's office.
Right.
Okay. Anybody have any other concerns or questions? No? Okay, next item is the, this update. I'd just like to first say in this regards to this is that, thank the residents for coming out to town meeting for both issues, for the senior center in, just to get the town's business done. Went good, there'll be, the ballot question will be on the June sixth for the senior center project phase two. So that will be on June sixth, so if anybody wants to, all the information's on the town's website if you still need information on it. But I'd like to thank the residents that were able to make it to the town meeting and help with the town's business. So the next item is Keola and Bynick Associates invoice number eleven for four thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Amendment number three, Keola and Bynick Associates in the amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred dollars.
Mr. Chairman? Just to clarify, this amendment basically is an increase in their fee in the amount of five thousand four hundred dollars, and it directly reflects the additional work that they had done to help us achieve the Mass DOT permitting for the drainage work that needed to be done at the site of the police station. So it's, it's not a new amendment of the three hundred and twenty-five thousand. It's just bringing the fee to a new total of three hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred dollars.
So move. Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item is Cardinal Construction Payment number thirteen, seven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item, opposed? Harry C. Builders Payment number five, three hundred and two thousand eight hundred and twenty-one.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, general update on the police station.
They are starting the grading of the parking lot and finish the drainage. Next week, they're going to start, they said about three week project, three, four weeks, they're going to start the signing on the building. So we're still looking at September, early September completion date, and we're still on budget.
Okay, anybody else on that? Okay, next item is, we received notification from Robert Chisholm is resigning from the Council on Aging and the Facilities Implementation and Strategic Planning Committee has the designee of the Council on Aging effective May third. I'd like to thank Mr. Chisholm, he did a lot of work. He was very instrumental on getting the project forward to the town meeting. So we'd like to thank him, and we're going to miss him on both, I know on the building committee, we're going to miss him. So thank him. I'm sure all the other board members agree with that.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Great help. And all the presentations we had were all designed by him. So they were, we're going to miss him. Lisa Henderson will be resigning from the Board of Health as of May first. Next item is meetings and invitations. The town received FY two thousand seventeen payment in lieu of taxes pilot, payment in the amount of six hundred and eighty-three thousand five hundred and eighty-one fifty-nine, a one point nine percent increase over the fiscal year two thousand sixteen pilot from the Department of Conservation and Recreation. So when people say, do we get anything for the reservoir, I guess that's it, right? That's the money we get from this.
All the DCR protected land.
All the DCR property, yeah. Right, I'm sure it would be more if it was all developed, but we'd have other issues if it was. Next item is, May twenty-third through June second, annual arts and craft exhibit at the Beeman Library. I believe you have until Friday. If you want to put something in that, you have to go get an application and drop it off by Friday, I believe it is. May twenty-sixth at ten AM, there's an invitation to the board from the fifth grade students at Major Edwards, who will be hosting a Memorial Day Assembly for our local veterans in the cafeteria. If any members are interested in going, there's information in the agenda on who to contact. And you can give them, give her a call, or, yeah, I guess give her a call, there's no email here. The next item is, we've said this a hundred times, June sixth, noon to eight, the town of, town election at Our Lady of Good Counsel Church. So along with other board positions and committee positions, it will be the, I guess, the ballot on the dead exclusion vote on the phase two of the senior center. Next item is future agenda items and selectments reports. Anybody? No one on the side? No one on the side?
I just want to remind people with Memorial Day coming up, we are having events in, in town as well as people that are taking care of the islands. I believe we've asked that they be taken care of for that date. So just a gentle reminder and hope people can get out to the Memorial Day events.
That was my item too, just wanted to remind the town about the Memorial Day parade. So the Memorial Day parade, if you're new to town or if you haven't gone to it, the parade, it, it, we meet at three cemeteries, the first two cemeteries, generally small gatherings. Then there is a parade that goes from the Duncan Gillies Parking Lot, which you probably don't know what that is. It's the Darby's Parking Lot on, on Central Street. Right next to there, the parade goes down from there to the Mount Vernon Cemetery. Wonderful parade, really encourage you to come out there, short period of time. Leaves the Duncan Gillies Parking Lot at approximately eleven thirty. We're down at the cemetery and out by no later than twelve thirty. And it's, it's a very somber event, and I really encourage you to come.
And I believe they're always looking for people to help out with the-
The decorating of the graves, if anybody is interested in helping decorating of the graves, you can get ahold of the American Legion. They can put you in contact with the, the actual people who decorate the graves the week before.
I do like to thank Phil Mallett for the wonderful presentation at the town meeting.
Good job.
I should say that Tom Mullins and Jack Curry were absolutely superb, pitch perfect.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we saw from the, I think we got the information out to the people and they, they saw what, now we need to move to the ballot box. Any others, hearing none, do I entertain a motion?
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, thank you.